District and our high school has an incredible culinary arts program. The change of the culinary arts lab was about three or four years ago funded by the Sykes Foundation and our students have certainly taken that to heart and used that laboratory to the best of their ability. We also have baking one and baking two, which are two new courses that the board has approved. And by looking at that table over there, I guess perhaps they can afford those classes. I know that we have family consumer science teacher Lori Gilmore here with some of her children. We also have family consumer science teacher Pat Hough here to give us support for everybody as well. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Gilmore, or do we have some students Ms. Gilmore work on this? Okay, we do. And if you would come up to the microphones and identify yourself, please, for the board, they're delighted that you're here.
I'm Laura Dawson. I'm a junior at Rockwell High School. I've...
My name is Janaleen Nagron and I'm a senior at Rockwell High School.
I've taken three cooking classes last year at Rockwell High School and I'm in baking one right now, which also counts as a MCC credit, so that's also a plus for that. And I've learned a lot over the cooking courses. I've taken Food for the Soul, Food for Today, and Food Choices. Food for the Soul really taught me about different like cultures and how it's expressed through food and how people really like enjoy food and express themselves through cooking. It's more than just like the food they put on the table. It's a part of them and a part of their life journey and story. In Food for Today, I really learned a lot about also how different food lifestyles like vegetarianism and different branches of vegetarianism. It's not just, you know, no meat or there's also like no eggs, no dairy. And it's a lot of, we do stuff for the community too. We did an empty bowls project where we made soup to help raise money for the community. And it teaches you more than just cooking food and learning basic skills and knowledge of cooking. It teaches you a lot about different life skills of getting educated on how to get employed in a cooking career if you were interested in that, or how to prepare yourself for different problem-solving situations, like if you don't have cornstarch, how to like prepare yourself to come up with something else to supply that if you don't have it. So it teaches you life skills of problem-solving and stuff.
So every year we hold our annual Cupcake Wars and from start to finish, the entire experience, I believe is one that, you know, we truly never forget. So there are eighteen, eighteen teams approximately every year that compete and each team consists of a student and a staff member. At the beginning, Ms. Gilmore posts a signup sheet and there are a limited amount of seats and we quickly run to our favorite teacher and we ask them if they can be our partners. And then after that, the process begins and it is very, very busy. So the first steps to beginning Cupcake Wars are finding recipes online, but not only recipes because you can obviously find a recipe from anyone from a blog, but it's finding reliable recipes, recipes that you can count on and that have great reviews, recipes from chefs and from cooks and from bakers. So we find the recipes and after you find them and you trust them and there's something that you're interested in, then you test them. And you don't only test them once, you test them three times, four times, maybe even five times. And you can't test them most of the time during the day, so along with this comes a huge time commitment. So with my partner this year, I had to stay after school maybe twice a week, every single week. So this was a huge type of time commitment for me, but also for her because she's a staff member, so she has commitments and as well do I, so she has to stay after when she can. So after we have tested all of our recipes, we have to find which recipes we like and which ones the judges might not like, which ones are too cliche or too typical. And then after that, we will, we will choose our recipes. And then during the process, we learn many things, things that we wouldn't even learn in like the cooking class. Ms. Gilmore teaches us a lot, but she can only put us in the kitchen as much as she can, but during this, you can learn so much on your own when you're doing hands-on. During this, I learned the difference between broiling, a double boiler, whisking, simmering, creaming, folding in, broiling boils, steampick, zesting, and how to frost my cupcakes beautifully. Also, you could, like who knew that there were so many different types of frostings? There's the general frosting that we always think of, there's a buttercream, there's icing, there's a glaze, a mousse, a fondant, a ganache, a meringue, a royal icing, whipped cream, and there are so many more. So after you have tested all of your recipes and you're finally happy with all of them, then the first round begins. All of the teams are split up into the four blocks throughout the day and you, the first round, you get one block to complete them. If you don't complete them within that block, you should complete them within that block or else you can't, you can't finish your cupcakes. Then you finish them and then the judges come at the end of the day and they judge them. And then after that, I believe it is six teams that advance this year. And from those six teams, the second round, you then have to compete, you have to make 200 cupcakes, 100 to 200 cupcakes, and then you have to make a display. And your cupcakes are not only judged on your taste and your flavor, but they're also judged on your display, just like in the actual show. So that's another hassle that you have to deal with because now you have to put in your own money and you also have to put in more time, but along with that, there are so many things at home that you can make a display of, so you can come up with many creative things. And also Pinterest is a great app, by the way. Do you guys see them? Then the second round comes and the first, there are three, first place, second place, and third place. And they choose them based, like I said, on the taste, the quality of the cupcakes, the flavor, and the overall presentation of the cupcakes. And they're displayed in the lobby of the auditorium and then that's a huge community event. Usually we donate whatever we make off of the event to a charity. And this last year, we donated to breast cancer awareness. And then after that, we have to, so the whole point, I think that's what I'm trying to say is that there's so much more than what people think that Cupcake Wars is really about. It's not just who can make the best cupcake, the nicest cupcake. It's all the stuff that goes on behind the scenes. It's all the volunteers that we need, the dishwashers, because there are a ton of dishes that we have to wash. And we need all of the advertisement and the publicity and the storage for all the cupcakes because we really need to find out how we're going to make 2,000 cupcakes in one day, all made from scratch. So then the whole point of Cupcake Wars, it's, it's a beautiful experience for every student and I think that every student should take advantage of the fact that Ms. Gilmore holds a beautiful event for every student to take advantage of. And you can just get to know your advisor or your counselor or whoever you teamed up with on a much more personal level. And I honestly, this was like the best time that I've ever had and I teamed up with my advisor for peer advocates and I had an amazing time and I got to know her very personally. So I think that Cupcake Wars is a wonderful addition for a great cause and it's so much more than just a cake and a topi. It's more of having a great time and learning new things. Thank you.
You can say for all of us that went to Cupcake Wars, we'd love to, it's amazing. So thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you. There's a few pictures up on the screen and I can just show them to you, there's only a few. Thank you.
Thank you too.
Lori Gilmore and the students who'd like to argue with some treats that they made in the late class. I just want to touch on a couple of things because you can look at the curriculum and find out what we do and look at, you know, the exams or whatever, but a few of the things that the girls talked about. Our goals are to learn how to cook because most people who can read can follow a recipe and make something to eat. Our goals are really to promote lifelong learning, to increase employability, even if they don't go into culinary as a career, they may go, stop there on their way to becoming an engineer or nurse. And so we want them to have the edge over other students. We want to give them opportunities to be recognized and that's why we have some contests and we enter some events that are outside of our school. We'd like for them to increase their critical thinking skills, provide essential life skills, in food preparation, costing, nutritional values and awareness, and also to create, to develop creativity. And I'd like to just mention two activities that we do. By the way, Jamie did a beautiful job talking about Cupcake Wars that ends in cupcake extravaganza. The kids raised just under $7,000 for multiple sclerosis and for a breast cancer charity last year. And with empty bowls and service learning with food, the kids earned over $10,000 for charities last year. One activity that we have is in our Creative Foods class is called a business plan. And the kids come up with an idea and develop it that has something to do with food. And so they come to the bank of Gilmore and we go over some paid for work and they decide on a business and they promote it and they provide it. And then we take a look at the profit and they have to pay the bank back, you know, for their supplies. And then with the profit, they take that money that goes toward a school-sponsored activity like prom or graduation gown or something. We also have a gingerbread construction class, which is just a small one-quarter class. And at the end of that, we take our gingerbread to the Gingerbread Festival, which is the largest one in New England over in South Windsor. And new, starting last year, we have a gastronomy class where we pair with a chemistry teacher and we manipulate food molecularly and we have a pretty good following for that too. And as the girl said, we do quite a bit of outside catering, not just for charity, but for the art show, Battle of the Bands. We're always there for the undergrad awards and graduate awards. We made thousand cookies for the math team. You know, basically we never say no. Any questions?
First off, I commend you for the, the learning that goes on, the whole process and the life skills these kids are getting. It's really great and that's what it's all about. It's not about learning, like you said, learning to cook. It's great that the kids are getting life skills that will be with them forever. And if they so choose to go on to a career in culinary arts, it's great that they, that Rockwell High School has the ability and that beautiful kitchen to teach the kids. Secondly, I just want to say, you know, if you need some guinea pigs, you can order that is here every other Monday night. And do you have a date for the next Cupcake Wars?
We do. I want to say it's April 27th, but I'll have to check on that.
All right, I'll put a question mark next to it. Thank you so much, teachers, for what you do and preparing the kids.
Thank you also for how you've expanded the family and consumer science program so much that went back to school and everyone has done an amazing job of offering so much to our students. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
On the chat.
I just want to ditto what was said before me, but also add that we don't know about all of these things that are going on. We know they're a wonderful thing, so to have you come this evening and tell us just how involved you are, that, that's really important for us to know and I appreciate that you came and did that.
I just want to make a very simple say ditto to everything that everyone has said. We really do appreciate everything that you do and we are so happy that these kids can learn in an happy environment and they have no idea how much they are consuming because they're having fun. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. We appreciate it. Thank you for the goodies.
You bet.
Very excited. Everybody who's in the audience, feel free to help yourselves if you want to pass them around because no one will go away. A couple of our students pick up the trays and go through the audience, please. Before we move on with our agenda, I just want to ask the board if we could swap Andrew General Business 2.1 and 2.1, 6.1 and 6.2 and just reverse them because I believe there are a lot of students here who want to talk about the lacrosse program, so we want to let them go first, okay? All right, move on to item 2.0 consent agenda, Mr. Holt.
Motion to move the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Mrs. Bush?
Second.
Does anyone want to pull any out of Mr. Ritten?
I'd like to call 2.1A, please.
Okay. And what else? Mrs. Aron.
I'd like to poll you, please.
Okay. But I guess we're not voting on the consent agenda. We'll start with A, Mr. Ritten.
In reference to page three, this is going back to Mrs. Aron's question when we met last time, the maps over at VCMS. I see that Mr. Russo's here as a posse and he could address the board, give us an update with your permission, Dr. Powell.
Yes, Mr. Russo.
Yeah, page three.
That, that, you have a question.
In two weeks.
This evening's happening.
There's a list, there's a list.
I don't, do I do that?
Yes. And what was reported in the agenda is that they would be installed within the next two weeks. And I think that's, we believe that's what it was at that time, but Mr. Russo, you can tell us now, is really going to happen?
Hello. Yes, the, the, that and for the VCMS gym has been ordered, they're being built. I do expect them in the next couple of weeks to be installed.
Do you see any problems from the vendor, you know, not going to use them prior to at least basketball season, which I think will probably back over.
Yeah, I don't see that being an issue at all. Definitely, something catastrophic would have to happen, but it doesn't have to begin before basketball season.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion to approve item 2.1A?
Yes.
Mr. Ritten, is there a second? Mr. Holt?
Second.
Any other questions to Kim?
Just a comment, second last paragraph, you have a pediatrician, I think it's a prom.
All right, so those who made the motion to approve, do you approve that change?
Would you?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, and anyone else on minutes from our record? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, you're standing. This is Russell, you're standing. Okay, thank you. Now item B, Mrs. Aron.
I'm certainly grateful for the donation and don't object to it, but it made me wonder about specifying the use of funding. I know that Mr. Rocket had gone on record very clearly stating that he wanted parity between, between the sports and wanted to be careful about fundraising and also I'm just asking the question about accepting a gift and with a, for a, for a particular, for particular equipment. Is that something that the board can do or can we simply accept a gift without that parameter and leave it to the discretion of the athletic director or the business director?
Dr. Pissel?
I didn't ask Banford family if they had any specific resources they wanted to target. They just requested that I use it for either baseball or softball, so I'll probably do it for something that affects both teams.
That was my question, Dr. Pissel. Should we be accepting gifts that are with a requirement of how they're used?
I think it's fine because I, I'm, right now, I, I take into account all the equipment, the uniforms, everything across all the teams. And if one program has a donation and is able to get some equipment, then I'll put more money toward another team. So I do think it's easy for me to kind of equal those things out if I know the total picture. And this is something that will help us, it might help us go toward a pitching machine, for instance, and then that's money that I wouldn't need to spend from the budget or from the activity account and I can use that then for other teams. So I think, I'm comfortable accepting it because again, I can see the overall picture and know that I can make sure that all our teams are getting what they need.
May I ask, Dr., you know, Mr. Picaro, is that how it works, Mr. Picaro, that a gift like that goes, goes where? To a student activity, to a particular budget? How does that work?
Through the chair, Mrs. Aron. The funds will be received to student activity account if they're earmarked for a specific purpose. It would be noted in the line item in that account for those funds received for the specific purpose that Dr. Pissel had outlined.
And there's, that, that's a standard of practice? Maybe that happens regularly?
Donations to the chair, donations are made to student activity accounts for specific purposes, raised, you know, fundraising and gave receipts, fundraising for different events that have happened. We heard fundraising effort from Mrs. Gilmore a little while ago. It doesn't happen as much, but it does happen.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bush?
I just want to thank the Banford family for the donation and my feeling is anybody who would like to donate to any program in our school, I openly accept it. And if they felt that they needed it for baseball, softball, whatever, I would hate to discourage anyone from making a donation to our schools. So I'm for letting the donor make the choice. If they had an experience in the baseball or softball programs, maybe they do want it to earmark it for that. So I think it's very important that we do not discourage people from making donations to our schools because it only in the long run helps our students.
Anyone else have anything to say? Mr. Kim?
I don't think this $500 item should really be the, the point at which we have an in-depth discussion about donations, but clearly from our recent experience here, it needs to be a more in-depth conversation about donations and what goes with them. I'm sure we all appreciate the intent of donating money or items, but with that comes a certain expectation that the board has that items become property of the board ed and that the donor does not have the exclusive right of dictating or stipulating what the uses shall be. And I haven't really looked at our policy manual about this, but I think we'll have to circle back and do exactly that. I haven't really examined this $500 or what the intent of the 500 is, but I think this is, so I'm prepared to accept this donation, but I think there's a lesson to learn from what we've been running through recently. And I think that those lessons could take on much more significance than this $500 item has, but really in the end, no less important.
Does anyone like to make motion on item 1, 2.1B? Mr. Holt?
Motion to accept 2.1B with gratitude.
Is there a second? Mr. Felina? Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Move on to secretaries report, opportunity for the board then to add or delete agenda items. Is there anyone who wants to add or delete an agenda item tonight? Okay, move on to item 4.0, community forum. I'm sorry.
Sorry. A board meeting or two ago, there was a pre-K program effectiveness agenda item that we postponed. I'm wondering if it's appropriate to add it or when will we be seeing it on our agenda?
Thank you. And I forgot to inform the board of that last week. It was on my list, things to do, and then they literally pulled the rug out from under me in my office. That train apparently left the station long before I had even brought it to the board. They've chosen eight students that they are going to follow. Apparently they, they did this through school readiness, which we are not in charge of last year. The person who is our liaison this year is brand new and had, has no recollection of that and doesn't know anything about it, so she's starting from round zero to do that. But the state has come in, my understanding is, and that they have chosen, that was the next email I received from the state, is they've chosen eight students to assess and that they're just going to do it. So we, we don't have a choice at all and thank you very much. That was, it was on my list last week to, to share with you and I neglected to do that. Okay, anyone else want to add or delete anything from the agenda? Okay, we will move on to 4.0, community forum. Opportunities for comments on agenda items, potential future agenda items, or general information provided to the board from citizens and organizations. Please state your name and address before you speak. Thank you, and then sign your name on the clipboard there.
Erin Palatier, 87 Potter School Road, Willa, Connecticut, grade five teacher at Northeast School. Good evening. I know this topic is on the agenda this evening, however, I would like to clarify and give a little background information about the donation for our fifth grade classrooms at Northeast School. The donation was actually given by my sister-in-law's mother, Mrs. Joan Marcy from California. Her late husband, Michael, was very fond of education. He was a well-known pediatrician who traveled around the world teaching other doctors. For hours and hours, he would talk to me about education and children and he had such a great respect for teachers. Michael sadly passed away about a year ago and set up a trust fund. When Joan heard that I became Teacher of the Year in Vernon, she began to research Northeast and learned that we were, we were a Title I school and could use the funds. Northeast and learned that we were a Title I school and could use the funds. Rather than donating the money to schools in California, she was pleased to help us out, knowing that students would benefit from the contribution. Joan needed to write the check out to a nonprofit charitable organization, which is why our PTO received the check. I haven't updated Joan on where we are with the money situation because, to be honest, I know she'd be heartbroken. As Teacher of the Year, Joan's wish was for the money to go to my students and the other fifth grade class in our school. Eventually, all of the students that funnel through fifth grade will benefit. If this contribution can help one child in our district, which it definitely will, then we're helping the whole town. We're in this field to shape and support students and improve their education. $25,000 would aid in reaching that goal. Now, I'd like to read a portion of Vernon's own Technology Committee vision statement. It reads, quote, "The Technology Committee for Vernon Public Schools in collaboration with administration, the Board of Education, and the community is committed to providing 21st century learning opportunities to all Vernon students by using modern, effective technologies. The incorporation of technology into classroom curriculum is crucial for the progression of students into a global workspace in society. For an in-public school, educational technology plan will provide access to new and unique technologies and resources not readily available to staff and students." End quote. "It would be a real shame if we couldn't take advantage of such a very generous gift." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Erin, and congratulations on being our Teacher of the Year.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board this evening?
For the record, Chris Dale, 147 Crestwood, Jordan, Vernon. I'm here as a lacrosse parent and not as part of any youth organization, which is a rarity for me. I just want to support the program. My oldest daughter is in the junior program, and I've watched in one short year this vast progression of her, not only as a lady, but as an athlete. The fundamentals of the program are solid, and I know we're talking about the high school level this evening, and I think there's several levels that we can take advantage of. It's going to be a great marketing tool because the fundamentals are there, and this is going to be a good team. I could see this being a state tournament team immediately. It's gonna, we all know we need an image adjustment, especially athletics is wonderful for that. These girls are going to do well, they're going to do well right away. I don't think it's a big budget impact, especially if we're eligible for the first stick program that will get kids that don't have the equipment, the equipment, and it's not a Title IX situation. So I think it's a no-brainer. It's going to be a good thing for Rockville High. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Samantha Peters. I live at 62 Tracy Drive, and I'm a freshman at Rockville.
Hi, I'm Hannah Johnston, and I'm a junior at Rockville High School. My address is 41 Ridgewood Drive, Vernon, Connecticut, Series.
I've been playing lacrosse for over six years, including this year, and for the first year, I had played guys lacrosse in second grade, and although it was enjoyable, I knew it wasn't for me, and I'd asked my dad to start the girls' lacrosse program. And in fifth grade, I began playing, and I immediately loved it, and I knew that I wanted to play in the future, and I wanted to get better. And since then, I've been practicing, I've been playing, and I enjoyed it so much that I eventually joined a club team over a year ago. And having the program at the high school helped me get to my goal because in the future, I hope to play at college level.
This past year, my sophomore year, I and a group of friends, we went with Dr. Pissel, and we decided to start the program, and a lot of people had interest in it, and I think it'll, like, it'll help redeem Rockville's name because I believe we'll, we can, as the man was saying before, we can, we could be a state tournament team, and I believe we have the skill for that and the passion and can restart glory to Rockville. Also, it'll help build our youth program because many people after eighth grade don't have an option. If they want to play in college, they'll have to join a club team, and also, I believe we'll also gain students back who moves to other schools such as East Catholic because some of them go there because there's no lacrosse program at Rockville.
Thank you very much. Thank you for giving up and speaking, I know it's not easy. Ladies, could you sign the clipboard, please? Thank you so much.
I'm not used to sitting down, sorry. President of the Vernon Lacrosse Association. I'm also the Sportsmanship Chair for the Connecticut Valley Youth Lacrosse. We started the program with the girls five years ago. We started out with one team, we now have four teams, which cover from kindergarten right through eighth grade. The number of students that'll be moving up into the high school will provide all the kids they will need to keep and progress a lacrosse team to where they are competitive. Some of the players for our teams already at the youth level are being recognized throughout the state on the different organizations. I'm hearing all the time about this student is good, this student is really good, you know, where, how she learned, et cetera. So the program itself is moving great for the youth organization, and we'd like it to get full use through the high school to keep these girls going and producing, hopefully, future athletes for colleges and stuff.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board tonight? Okay, thank you very much, everyone. And we will move on to item 5.0, curriculum.
Charlie Chaput, 15 Vernon Drive. I just want to speak in support of this as well. When we think about the many opportunities and good things that participating in athletics provides, I think that if we can provide another opportunity, another avenue for the students in the high school, I think that's wonderful. When we think about things that impact people's appreciation and participation in their high school years, athletics can be part of that. When we think about commitment to a school, and I'm not even thinking about wins or losses here, but involvement and engagement and feeling a part of something, I think lacrosse and other sports have much to offer. I look back at my own experiences and I think of, I was, I played boys lacrosse and played at college, and I think about the different opportunities that it provided. I would not be where I am today if I did not have different opportunities related to athletics. So when we think about the opportunities to be about, be a part of a team, for teamwork, working towards something, even at first, if you may struggle, I could imagine a young team is going to struggle when you play at a varsity level. It takes time, but I think about the factors that it will support their growth as individuals, not just as athletes, but as individuals, and how sports and athletics can be a part of that. I think that is definitely something we all should consider, besides the fact of being able to engage in, if they select lacrosse, a healthy pursuit of being physically active. We always have concerns of what are we going to do with kids, what can they do after school? This seems like a very constructive, positive way that they can be involved, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, now we will move on to item 5.0, curriculum. 5.1, Smarter Balanced Assessment, Consolation, and Testing Results. Dr. Conway?
I will turn this over immediately for Mr. Tester, who I think you noticed there are lots of people waiting for the board to talk about lacrosse.
Yes. Okay, I know you've had the opportunity to review the PowerPoint, I just want to highlight a few of the areas. If you look on slides three and four, just a little bit about the annual snapshot, the S-Back is an annual snapshot of teaching and learning. With this new test, this year came the results. We're using a different measure, we have set a new higher bar. So this year's test is a baseline for our students from which to grow. This, the S-Back really is not useful as a sole measure of student achievement, so along with S-Back, which is our annual assessment, we do use NWA assessment three times a year, which allows us to really progress monitor, take a closer look at how our students are progressing through the year. Our fall window is open right now, so our students are completing NWA assessments. In October, I can come back and share with you how the fall administration of NWA assessments went. That, as well as our local assessments, we do have a district-wide assessment calendar as well as a student, as well as a building-based calendar that tracks our math reading and writing assessments as well. So it's really one piece of assessment, one piece of, we're looking for, really to triangulate that data and read data points. On pages, slides five and six, really, slide six really speaks to, there are really two different types of assessments. The computer adaptive test item, which, based on student responses, the computer program adjusts and then performance tasks. And it's really about, as I shared before with our new math resource, it's really about applying skills, so not just teaching math concepts, but asking our students to apply those skills to solve problems. Looking on pages, slides nine and 10, slide, not 10, rather, really talks about the four levels, so level one, not meeting expectations, level two, approaching, level three, meeting the achievement level, and level four, exceeding the achievement level. And then skipping over to slide number 13. District assessment participation rate for English Language Arts, 97% of our students completed that, and for math, 96.8%. You'll notice all the subgroup areas are not filled in, we have not received that data. When we do receive that data, I'll share, I'll give you, I'll update that slide and share that with you. The next slides from 14 on really speak to specific results. You can see how, starting with English Language Arts, our students, you can see the percentage of students at levels one, two, three, and four, in grades three through eight and 11. The average for Vernon was 45% of our students in English Language Arts met either, met or exceeded levels three and four in grades three through eight and 11. Slides 15 and 16 really looks at the subgroups. So for example, if you looked at our students in grade three, our special education students, 80% of our students were at level one, and if you follow and track that group of students, or those students, special ed, special education students in grade 11, 38% of our students are at level one. So there is deduction of the number of students performing at level one. Slide 19 really states to math, in math, across the state, scores were lower compared to English Language Arts. Vernon's average for grades three through eight and 11 was 29% at levels three or four. So the slides really give us an opportunity to really take a first look at a baseline scores for our students, and really, the baseline is, as I said before, really looking at how our students will grow over time. Again, this is an annual checkup of how our students are doing, where they're learning, where the gaps are, and we'll also use that in conjunction with our NWA assessments throughout the year to really progress monitor, which will provide more opportunities for our students to work with our students and set student goals throughout the year. If you have any questions or comments, you'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Tester, I, you just said, you stated that the subgroups were not completed, which, which will probably be other than what we have here, right? Which is...
The only subgroup right now in the data that we don't have yet from the state are free and reduced ones and our participation rate by subgroup.
You have to help me understand this because all you have is Black, Hispanic, and Spanish ed, and you have more than that in school.
That is correct. Those are the indicators that the state provided us at this time. Those are the only three indicators that we can...
And why is that?
That's the data points that they provided to us. They didn't tell us why they have those three, they do have those three areas that they provided the data.
I understand what you're saying, that was what you had to call, but I'm just saying that it's such an unfair testing when you don't test the overall, all these students. You know, I mean, you can't get, to me, you can't, this doesn't make sense. That's just my personal feeling. I understand that you may, any Caucasian students, because we have them, and they're not here. They're not part of this.
We, we looked at that the other day, Dr. Hanway and I looked at that, and we had the same question. Why, why aren't they listed?
Why are we doing this testing? I mean, to me, it's irrelevant.
It's required, so we are required to do the assessments.
Just add this, add into this, every student, well, 97% of the students took the, took a full assessment. We, our concern was, I was looking at one, one test in particular, and about two-thirds of our students scored at level one who were Black and who were Hispanic, and I said, so show me where the, you know, where's the group of white kids? And if it was two-thirds of those kids as well, then our attack on that area of learning would be, there would be no gap. That means all of our children are getting not enough, but the same learning, and so that, we would attack that in one way. However, if only 20% of our white children were at level one, that's a whole nother question. And so we truly have been very diligent in trying to get this data, and we have not been able to speak to a human being at this point, and we've been doing for, we've had this for two weeks. It is extremely, extremely frustrating, and the same with free and reduced, you don't have that information. We know we have a huge population, but we will also need that in comparison with the students who are not free and reduced to evaluate if there is a gap. Any, any group that's not listed did not have, is it 20?
Twenty, yes.
Did not have 20 students in it, so possibly English language learners might not be listed in all the groups, Asian students, American Indian students, those small, those small areas would not be included.
But we should include them all.
But we also don't have, except for the first page where we have each grade level, that's where the all comes in, but we have not been able to disaggregate them. We wanted to give the board, this has been in the paper, so we wanted to give you what we had, so I'm sorry I interrupted. Thank you.
Mrs. Russell?
I'm going to end this for me, but I just think that this is a waste of time because we don't have all the students.
Mrs. Bush?
All the students are counted where it says "all students." They're not just the subgroups that were notated on the other slides. Have you gotten the state average on how they did for the state for levels three and four, or how we did in comparison? Because that would, that would kind of give an idea if a lot of, you know, if the numbers are right around where the state numbers are, then we can kind of judge, because this is a new test, we have not had, you know, we haven't seen this before, but if, if the other towns in the other areas, or even schools in our, in our area, could give us an idea of the state average, that could give us idea how we're performing in comparison. So I understand that we need to do something with this data because I think it's important that, you know, we look at it so that when we go to look at it in years ahead, that we can see our growth, but I need to know where we, where we stood in comparison to the average state score.
I have that data.
Okay.
For grades three through eight and 11 in English Language Arts, the state average is 55%, and Vernon's average was 45%.
You just said something I didn't understand. So that would be levels three and four through... So that would be levels three and four through you?
Correct.
Okay.
And in math, uh, the state average is thirty-nine percent, and Vernon's average is twenty-nine percent.
I might add, um, add to that, um, Mrs. Bush, through you, Mrs. Bush. The, um, the PowerPoint that you have before you was given to us by the state. This is the data they want us to report, even though it's not all complete. Um, they are discouraging right now that comparison. Um, they did give the state averages, but that's not something that they feel boards should be looking at. They feel that the board should be looking at their own, um, and over the next three years, really looking at that data, seeing where the areas of growth are here. Um, this does inform some of our curriculum, uh, a little bit, uh, it's not that detailed, but it will inform some of that growth, uh, and some of that direction. But, um, as I said, this was, uh, the state's PowerPoint that they sent to all the, all the districts, and, um, they're very much discouraging that district by district, so there are no, there's no DURG information available, um, just the state averages at this point.
Through you to Mr. Testa, please. I understand that this is a baseline, we have to start somewhere, but it does make me ask you again, if there's a ceiling to the difficulty of questions that are asked, um, then how are we sure that we're getting a real representation of those, of those students?
Well, the students, based on the level, uh, the four levels, that gives us, uh, an idea of where they're performing, based on the results, so, uh, every student's, um, as they go through the tests, it's, depending on what they, how they answer, the test, the next item is either more difficult or, or not, uh, or, or easier, so that, that'll determine their baseline, and then it'll determine their level of achievement.
I understand, but if there's a ceiling to that, if they, if it can, questions stop at a certain point, the student goes as far as they can in the exam, then you don't have a real picture of that student. They'll end up as A4 and, and end up in the statistics, but you don't have a picture of that student.
Yes, but that's why this is an annual assessment, I think that's why we, uh, are using N-W-A assessment to give us more of that data, to be able to tell us, uh, three times a year how our students are progressing, so, yes, that'll give us a snapshot, a student, uh, would be on a level four, for example, uh, which gives us a range of their score. However, the N-W-A assessments will give us much more information regarding, uh, how students are progressing, and gives, and give teachers that information they need when they're pulling small groups of students together, um, they'll have, uh, much more information, how to group students, and how to set goals for students specific to their achievement.
I'm not challenging you, and I understand that it's not one measure that, that's teachers and, you know, administrators are using. I'm, I'm really questioning more, um, has there ever been any discussion at the state level about us, about limiting or capping, um, the measurement, or, I know you're just, we're administering the test the way it is, I understand that. I'm not challenging you, I'm wondering if there's ever been a discussion about...
Not that I've heard at this point.
Okay. Mr. Stansfield?
Thank you, um, I think pretty much everyone knows by now that I despise this test, and the fact that it's taken the state over three months to give us these results, when I know other states have had them for a number of months now, makes me question the motives behind that. I do have a couple of questions, first of all, through you, to the, uh, to your manager here. Dr. Conway, we had asked, um, that the administration send a letter to, uh, the state, basically outlining the fact that we felt that the N-W-E-A assessments were far more valuable than this once-a-year assessment that was done. Was that done, and did we ever receive any response?
We did not receive response, that was done, I gave a copy of it in the board packet, um, right after the...
Right, I, I remember seeing it, I just wasn't, I just wanted to verify, thank you. Since we now have two assessments, uh, the S-VAC and the N-W-E-A, is there any validity in, in combining the results of both? I guess I'll ask that through you, not through, Mr. Testa, or to Dr. Conway? So then, even, even though I'm not thrilled with, with how it's measured, it is a data point and one that we have to recognize, because the state tells us we have to recognize it, so how do we reconcile the two?
The S-VAC is more of a summative assessment, so it's an annual one-time snapshot, whereas N-W-A could be used more of a, as a formative assessment, where we're using that, uh, those results, um, to set specific goals for our students. So there are two different types of tests, so it's really difficult to, um, compare or combine those, they're, they're two different tests.
Thank you, and I actually have one more, just a procedural question. On one of the slides, it makes it note that the federal government requires ninety-five percent participation in this test, what happens if the school district falls below ninety-five percent?
Through you, um, manager. The, um, my understanding would be that, uh, the state might be in jeopardy for not receiving federal funds. Um, I can also tell you, I understand that were percents of participation rates in other parts of the state for a particular grade levels that were lower than ninety-five percent.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Kim?
When might the, uh, what date might be, might be in place where the board would receive the additional information that several of us have been talking about this evening?
Through you, manager. Um, I have, uh, we've not been able to speak with a human being yet, and so, um, I would hate to tell you at the next board meeting, but certainly we will continue that, um, and we'll let the board know as soon as we do receive that data, as soon as it is available, but it is just not available to us at this point.
If I could, I would hope it would happen prior to the, the upcoming CAE convention, but I would remind everyone that at that convention, there is a State Board of Education meeting with, uh, board members, and it is a, it is a good opportunity to bring to the board, State Board of Ed members, issues and concerns to something like this, so if we don't receive what we're looking for, and it's two months away, then I think we should type up something nice and neat, uh, as talking points, so that they can be presented to the, uh, in, in that forum, uh, in, uh, November or something, twentieth or thereabouts, something.
Sorry, I also wanted to make one more note, there are significantly more detailed results available online, including school-by-school breakdowns of the results, so, um, kind of curious, uh, why we didn't get some of that tonight, is it just because we were just giving us the state presentation?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Through you to Mr. Testa again, there, on page four, the, the top slide, if I, if you can help me understand the, under reading, the column on the right, it says, "The student can read closely and analytically to comprehend blah, blah, blah." What does that, what is close reading? Page four, tabbing here.
Yes, uh, that's really looking, analyzing text, so they're reading for a specific purpose, uh, so they can use, um, details within the text to answer questions, analyze, uh, and answer questions. So it's just a term, "read closely," yeah.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Testa. And we'll move on to general business, um, I would, we'll start with six point two. Approval of Rockville High School varsity girls lacrosse program. I know, I asked Dr. Basell to come to the microphone, if she would, uh, if you recall, Dr. Basell came to you two years ago, um, to request a club team, and, um, we were not successful at that time. Um, last, this past year, however, uh, or actually two years ago, it was a different kind of team, and now we are here, like, this year we have a club team, is that correct?
Uh, last year we had a club team.
Last year we had a club team.
Yeah, so this year, this spring, we're hoping, no, last year we had a club team, this year we're hoping to, uh, improve our varsity.
I'll turn it over to Dr. Basell.
So two years ago, we, uh, tried to start, and we just didn't have enough girls to, to move forward, I didn't want to come to you until we had really a viable number, and I knew we could support either a JV or a varsity team. Uh, last year, we put together a group, we had fourteen girls, only one graduated, so we have three that could potentially return this year, and we have thirteen to fourteen incoming, well, they're our current freshman who play, so we know we have a nice solid group, probably a twenty to twenty-five girls, um, and I, uh, would like approval to, um, field age girls varsity lacrosse team this upcoming spring.
Mr. Stansfield?
Thank you, obviously there's a lot of support in the audience for this idea, and in principle I support fully, I just have a question, Dr. Basell, what the financial impact would be?
Well, again, um, you know, I didn't put anything in the budget, this current budget, because it, uh, before last spring, I wasn't certain that we'd, we'd, uh, be able to make this request, uh, so moving forward, I would put in the budget for this upcoming year, um, for a coach, a head coach, and also for, um, some instructional supplies, what we call the equipment, you know, line items for sports, um, and then you have to obviously factor in transportation costs for the away games and officials for the home games, so it would be, um, a cost to the board moving forward, up to this upcoming budget.
How are you going to fund it this year?
Uh, this year, um, again, I would use some intramural, uh, coaching money that we have, um, we had some, uh, uniform money left over, uh, last year that I did not use to, need to use on existing teams, so I, I purchased uniforms in anticipation of doing this, we were able to purchase a couple more, uh, lacrosse goals with some instructional money I had left over, so we do have, um, things in place now to be able to support this, um, and it will just be a matter of finding the money for the coach this year, which again, I could tap into the activity like that if I needed to as well. Um, I want, I didn't want to put it again into the budget until we, um, were certain that, um, it was viable, and I think at this point it is, and we have, um, a strong group coming in, in our, our freshman class, and to add to the solid group of, uh, juniors and seniors that we will have, uh, I think it's the right decision to move forward at this time.
Mr. Kim?
I'd like to put a motion on the floor for purposes of further discussion, that the Vernon Board of Education approve the Rockville High School varsity girls lacrosse program, and that it be, and that be a final budget approval.
There's a second?
I'll second that.
I don't, I don't doubt the value of a program like this for a moment, and I don't doubt the participation, but I do have two concerns, uh, that, that you are able to find the money in this budget to support it, and I, I am hard-pressed to support going forward without a dollar amount. We, we struggle every budget, and, um, I would need to know, um, dollars and what we would be looking at next year, because the last thing I want to do is support a motion like this to deny it when the budget rolls around, so...
It would be comparable to the boys' lacrosse line items that are in there, and Mr. Macarroll, can you look that up for me quickly? Um, so it'd be around, uh, seven thousand dollars for a coach, approximately, um, for instructional supplies and those line items, we don't have big line items for any sport, it's, uh, around five hundred dollars, um, you know, again, the transportation costs, it would depend on how many home and away games we schedule. Right now, we do have some, um, CCC games scheduled, I asked them again to look, uh, they ask us every spring, do you anticipate possibly adding any teams, so we tell them that, so they can get us onto the schedule, um, so there would be, again, some transportation costs, it would be hard for me to tell you exactly right now, uh, just in terms of the other games we might add, but, um, you know, it would be comparable to what the boys' costs are right now.
Mr. Macarroll has that number for the boys?
Through the chair, uh, I would be glad to meet with Dr. Basell and put together a budget in more detail if that's needed in the interest of, of, tonight, if you're just looking for a number, what's the exact budget line item you're looking for?
Uh, being at the boys' lacrosse in the Rockville High School, um, budget area, again, there's line item in it for, uh, field and athletics, that would be a transportation, other professional services, that would be the officials, and then it has the, um, coaching line item and the instructional supplies, that's basically the four, uh, budget items we have for each.
Can I ask a question while he's looking at it? Because girls' equipment is significantly less than boys', correct?
It is, and again, generally, it's, it's been a sport where the kids provide their own equipment, and that wasn't an issue last year, all the girls, they basically need sticks and goggles, they all had those last year. We did apply for the first stick program, uh, we don't know whether we'll get that or not, but if that does go through, there would be, uh, they would be providing a number of sticks and goggles to us the next couple of years, um, so we wouldn't have big instructional costs. The biggest costs are the transportation for the away games, the officials for the home games, and the coaching, those are the three line items in all of that sports budgets that are the largest.
Through the chair, uh, on page twenty-two of our budget for the current fiscal year Rockville High School coaching, object code five-one-one-one-seven, head lacrosse coach budgeted for six thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars, assistant lacrosse coach budgeted at four thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars.
We would not be, uh, looking for an assistant coach as the head coach? What about, uh, transportation and officials for the boys?
Again, through the chair, um, I'd be glad to meet with Dr. Basell to sit down and go through more detail, uh, some of the budget line items that the board is looking for, more information. I would suggest that would be the best course of action moving forward to have, uh, for us to sit down and meet and put that together, so we can get a more accurate impact of what the budget impact would be.
Mr. Kim? I'd like to move to table the motion until we have that information, I need to know what kind of, I think it's important for the board to know what kind of dollars we're committing to, and if Dr. Basell has found the money for this year, then, um, I don't understand the urgency of doing it this evening without transportation costs and official costs.
Is there a second for that motion? All of us in favor? I believe there's someone in the audience who wanted to, want to say something about this?
Yeah, oh.
Hang on, hang on.
Well, again, it, before, it, the first step to me was getting approval, because I can't go out and look for a full schedule unless we have the approval for the team, so it's going to be hard for me to, I can estimate what generally the cost would be for transportation and officials, but until you have a team, you can't go out looking for games, so, um, I can give you just, I'll be able to give you an estimate, but I wouldn't be able to give you, because I can't do that to these teams at this point in time.
So, would you like to say something about this?
Yeah, Brian Johnston, um, I'm one of the lacrosse coaches for, for youth program. I'm also a recruiter, coach, and evaluator for Bryan National Lacrosse Terms. This is an opportunity to start something at the high school that every kid can be proud of. We're sitting up here discussing line items in a budget, worried about it. These girls have been busting their behinds for the last four or five years in the youth program to get up to the high school and play. A lot of them have had opportunities to go to other schools like East Catholic, we've lost four or five girls to East Catholic because of not having a lacrosse program. I just don't get it, I mean, it, it's real nice for these girls to have something to be proud of, um, and getting a coach is one thing, I understand the budget issues, um, it's, it's everywhere, but just to not take a vote on it now, get it in place, so in the springtime, they have a team. If you don't do it now, and you wait too long, it's going to be hard to get the schedule, and you keep pushing it back, pushing it back, and you're going to lose more girls. That's what happened two years ago, there was no information put out, twenty-six girls signed up, then all of a sudden it was too late, they all left. Last year, same thing happened, waited, 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 they found out it wasn't a varsity program, they went back to other sports. There's girls that want to play this sport really bad. I just think you should have voted on it now.
We did not table the motion, sir, so it is still on the table. Anyone else, Mr. Stansfield?
So, I think everybody around this table fully wants to support the program, and we're just being asked to write a blank check for it, and I think that's where the real problem lies, I, I wish, if, if Dr. Basell come to us with some sort of estimate tonight about what that would cost. You know, if it, if, I assume this will come to a vote, I'm going to vote for it, but what we, what we lack is, is some sort of cost basis for what this is going to end up being, and that's important, I mean, we have to make every penny squeal here, unfortunately, we're, you know, that's...
know, that's our job, so.
Mrs. Bush?
I understand that we really do need a final number budget, but it looks like Dr. Brazil has worked a little magic and made sure that this year we're viable. I really think that we need to move on this as soon as possible. I support the idea of the girls' lacrosse team one hundred percent for many reasons. One, of keeping students in our schools, local schools, instead of them leaving to go to other schools and other programs. Number two, it gives our students at the high school an opportunity to experience a sport that they absolutely love, and they might want to take it to the next level, and there are buku scholarships out there that these girls can apply to, and even if they're not going to become, you know, lacrosse players in their life, this would be a path to their education, and we need to give them that opportunity, and we have a huge amount of freshmen coming in. I'd like to see it go down the road so they have four years of experience on a varsity high school team. To be honest, I truly believe that this is a sport that we can afford, because I think at this point, we can't afford to lose any students to other schools.
With that impassioned plea, Laura, I'd like to make a motion that the Vernon Board of Education approve the Rockville.
Is there anyone?
I'm sorry.
I appreciate the plea from Ms. Bush for the team, and I appreciate all the participants coming in here and lobbying for the team, but again, it comes back to financing. This year, I sat through a budget where we cut an awful lot of staff members, okay? And we also looked at all of our sports programs, and Dr. Brazil came before us and told us, well, this one can be cut because we know we need to save money here, this one can be cut because we've got to save money there. I haven't heard anybody telling me where we're funding this from. If she told me, we have the dollars in this program that we're not putting on the street this year, and we're going to put the lacrosse on instead, that's different. But if this is about fifteen thousand dollars, which is around where the boys, I believe you're going to see that number come out to be, fifteen thousand dollars, it may not sound like a lot of money to you, but when you're looking at this cost that we've put, you know, into the budget this year for athletics, we didn't put a lot, we don't have any extra fat in the budget. So where does the money come from? That's the point. We can put a team on the field, but if we can't fund it, though any requests for monies that aren't allocated today have to go through the budget office, have to be approved to be transferred before that money can be spent. So if we don't do our due diligence as a board, we're not doing this town any favors either. We are the financial responsibility for this budget, that's the reason why this board is coming down and saying, we need to know where the dollars come from. It's very easy to put all the passion into it, I wish you were here this passionate during budget season. If that were the case, we'd have no problem passing budgets in this town, but we need to know where the dollars are coming from.
And honestly, I do not have cuts on the other side to make up for that money, so I wasn't thinking of cutting another sport to add this sport. It is an addition.
So are you saying that you can afford all of the expenses for this coming year?
This year, because again, this time last year, I wasn't ready to come before you and ask for this, because we did not have the numbers and the support of the number of kids coming in that would have supported that. Now, I think we do, and I think it's the responsible thing to do for the students, but again, it isn't, it isn't that I have cuts in other sports to make up for that, it is an additional expense that would be in the athletic budget.
But you have found the money in the.
For this year, yes, but for next year, it would be something.
Would have to be that.
I want to be honest with you, for next year, I wouldn't be putting it in the budget, so it would be an increase.
Just to follow, you say you've found the monies, you believe you have it in other accounts, but has it been reviewed by the finance office, and do we know we can, I mean, fifteen thousand is not a small amount.
We can, for instance, we are not having JV football team this year, so we have some cost saving in those, and I knew that would happen, I knew there were going to be like transportation areas where we might have some savings. Again, we typically haven't spent all the money in our intramural coaching line items, and those kinds of things are where we can make up some of that money for this year, and I think it's the right thing to do. But moving forward, I would need to put that into the regular line items. It doesn't mean, I might say to you, it doesn't look like we're going to have a JV football team next year, but right now, I don't think that's the case, I think next year, we will be supporting three football teams. So it changes from year to year, I know the boys' lacrosse coach is concerned we may not be able to field a JV and a varsity, but boys' lacrosse team this year, just because his numbers coming up from the youth are not as strong. So again, it changes year to year on the number of participants. So this year, I think we will be fine in terms of, you know, finding that money, next year, I would look to put it into the budget, and so that's why, you know, again, it is something that you, the board, I think, does need to consider. It isn't, I am not here saying I would cut another sport to add this.
Mr. Stansel.
Thank you, through the chair. Dr. Brazil, I don't think any of us are, well, I'm always concerned about the budget, but I'm not looking down the road till the next budget. We're just trying to make sure that when we vote on this program right now, you have the money to fund it, and I guess that's, you know, the same concern that Mr. Booth has, that we were so tight on the sports budget last year that we cut funding, you know, at least to one sports program. So if you can, you know, if you can give us the concrete examples of where the money's coming from, I think you'd all feel a lot better around the table.
And I can do that, I mean, I can, you know, as a board, I mean, I can certainly go through and tell you, you know, we didn't, you know, when you go into the year, you're always anticipating what numbers or kids are going to come out for each team. We have more girls' soccer players than we've had, we have our boys' number is better, but a little bit down. Football, again, we have a good, a strong group in our freshman boys', but we don't have enough for freshman JV and varsity this year. We didn't know that going in, we thought we would have three football teams, but it was not safe to field three teams this year. So you just go, and you can't really anticipate that always going into the year, and that's the situation we're in this year. So at this point, I feel that we can support it moving forward, and then we'll have to look to put it into the budget for next year. Now, I, you know, every year, again, I would anticipate we would be able to field three football teams next year. I'll look at the boys' lacrosse numbers, I don't know if we will need an assistant coach this year, because again, looking at the numbers we have coming back and the numbers coming in, you know, we're close to that number where we are going to struggle even to field a varsity level team for boys' lacrosse. I think we can, but the numbers aren't really strong in that youth area, so, you know, we just have to look at it year to year, all the towns are in this situation. I can't tell you the number of emails we get daily from ADs from other districts saying, oh, we had to cancel, you know, freshman football, we had to cancel JV girls' soccer, we had to, it just, the numbers change, and it's always kind of a moving target, but we do the best we can in the budget season to anticipate for you, and that's what I'll do again this year, try to look ahead and say, where do we think we're going to have those of our teams next year?
Mr. Stansel.
Thank you, and through the chair. Dr. Brazil, I completely agree with you, I never expect you to know exactly what's going to happen. All I'm concerned about is, we vote tonight to approve this, and we're committing to spend X amount of money, that's still to be determined, let's call it fifteen thousand dollars, I just want to make sure that we have.
But I think, I repeat my concern, to start with, Dr. Brazil, it's really fortunate that you're able to find money in your budget, fifteen thousand dollars, to fund it for this year. The last thing we want to do is bless girls' lacrosse to send, say, next year, we can't afford it, and that's the concern that I have, is we need to make a commitment to girls' lacrosse as long as you can field a team. And to Mr. Booth's point, we had a hard time with the budget last year, and I don't think, based on all of the positives, I still worry about making that financial commitment and seeing it through the budget process. You know what we went through.
And I think those are conversations that Mr. Rock and I had, just so you know, we talked about whether we are going to be able to field freshman teams, for instance. We still field a freshman girls' volleyball team, a freshman boys' basketball team, some schools can't do that anymore. So, you know, I prepared for him last year, if we needed more cuts, where would we go? And so I have those kinds of things in my mind going in, just so you know, and if you tell me I have to make choices between this and this, then I'm prepared to kind of look at that. So we across the board are trying to keep as many of our athletic programs as strong as possible, but I know that we may have to make some hard choices down the road. Lots of schools are in that, and school systems are in that situation, so I know it's reality for you guys, and I understand that. The athletic budget can only be a certain amount of the overall budget, and I certainly understand that, Mr. Rock and I look at that every single year.
So you think it's responsible for us to bless girls' soccer because you have the money for one season?
Yes.
I do, because I think going forward, that is a program that we can sustain, and so then, if we get to the point where I have to look at other programs, then it's not that, it would just be the levels of each other program, you see what I'm saying by giving the example of the freshman teams? Ram High School, for instance, they don't have many freshman teams, and they don't let their freshman teams travel, so those are adjustments they have made to find some money. If we have to, we're going to have to make some choices. If you guys would come back to me and say, yes, you can put, you know, girls' lacrosse into the budget, but you have to keep your line item at this, then we're going to have to make some choices.
Well, Mr. Camp's motion did include pending budget deliberation, so we're in essence just blessing it for this year, and next year, we'll talk about whether it makes it into the budget or not, as long as people are clear about that, your players and your parents are clear that it's not a commitment beyond this season until we see the budget.
And I think, you know, again, it wasn't, I didn't feel it was responsible for me to come to you with last budget season and say this, I just didn't. So we are in this situation, and I think that is, in my mind, an okay way to proceed, and then I will build it in, and if you guys tell me, okay, you're too high, then I'll have to make some decisions. And Mr. Rock and I knew that we would probably be in this situation, so we were prepared for it last year, if we have to do it again this year, then we'll look at that.
And your team and your parents understand that as well, but this is for the spring, and.
Yeah, I think all the sports teams have to, I mean, I had hard conversations with our boys' basketball coach and our girls' volleyball coach last year about, we may, you know, the freshman teams may have to at some point be considered. You know, again, overall, we're looking to provide as many opportunities for our student athletes as we can, but I understand the budgetary constraints you are, and the board is in, and we'll be responsible as we can in terms of keeping the programs as strong as we can, but not spending where we can.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes, first I want to say, absolutely, we need to look at our budget carefully, but it looks like we have a group of girls that just want to play lacrosse. And I think for this year, since we do have the money, I think next year, in the next budget season, I think Dr. Brazil can work creatively on her budget, use some of the examples from the other towns that they've used, like you said, Ram has freshman teams, but they don't travel, that saves money. I think that this year, we just have that group of girls that want to play lacrosse, and I think we should let them.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the Rockville High School varsity girls' lacrosse program? Pending budget. All those in favor? Genonymous. Cheers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move on to item six point one, twenty-five thousand dollar donation to Northeast School from Mrs. Joan Mazy, Beverly Falls, California.
Thank you, Mrs. Bush. I realize that you've heard from Ms. Pelletier already this evening in public forum, I know that this was a donation from a relative of hers, but I would ask if Mrs. Green and Ms. Pelletier could come to the microphones in case there are additional questions that the board has, and I understand that the, some of the areas that probably were not addressed from Ms. Pelletier earlier was who actually will own any equipment or goods that are purchased with this funding, that seemed unclear in the original intent, so I know that would need to be addressed, and there may be other things the board wishes to be addressed as well.
Do you want to tell us about the whole process first before we start asking questions?
Regarding, do you want about.
Like the specifications of the donation, if there were any, and the whole process?
Sure, well, just to back up what I had said, was she wanted it to go to me because being teacher of the year, and she usually donates quite a bit of money to the schools. After looking into Northeast School, she knew that we could definitely use the funds, I mean, the whole town could, and she decided to donate it toward fifth grade. A big part of our state standards in fifth grade is researching and typing, word processing, learning how to type. Just last week, we were, I had students type in the computer lab, which doesn't hold the whole classroom, and my students, I had three students ask me how to get to the next line, I had to show them to press enter. So we're behind in that, and in previous years, I had one computer in my classroom, when we have to do research, I bring in my own, I bring my own Kindle, the one-on-one in my classroom, he brings in things just so the students can research and type, so I had mentioned that to my brother, who actually shared that with her, and that's why she thought this would be an excellent opportunity to give us the money so that we could upgrade and we could get some computers in fifth grade, and then the other carts could be used for other grades in the school. Does that answer your question?
Well, there may be more, I don't know what's coming.
Mr. Stansel.
Thank you, and I want to start by saying the same thing that I said last time, which is, this is an incredibly generous donation, and I, you know, I'm blown away by the generosity, and I absolutely want to make sure that we accept it and that it helps our students, but, that said, we have several issues, and maybe it's just one of communication, but the way this was presented at the last Board of Education meeting was that this was a twenty-five thousand dollar donation to the school, and Mr. Picaro actually referenced it going to the Student Activity Fund several times. So when we all voted to accept that agenda, consent agenda item, we were voting thinking that's what was happening, none of the stipulations were defined in there, other than the fact we discussed that the Chromebooks were intended for the fifth grade, which we took, turns out, that was unfortunately completely wrong. The donation was given to the PTO, which means what we made a motion on didn't exist. There was no twenty-five thousand dollar donation to Northeast, it was a twenty-five thousand dollar donation to the PTO. If the PTO then chooses to buy Chromebooks and donate them to the school system, at that point, we would have to accept that as a donation. So on tonight's agenda, again, it references a twenty-five thousand dollar donation to Northeast School, which is not correct. So I just want to lay that out there, because when we accept them, and I want to accept them, we have to do it in the correct fashion, so this isn't. So, this isn't anyone's fault, not blaming anyone for this. Certainly not your fault, certainly not the donor's fault. I just want to make sure that we do it correctly and legally, because we actually can't interfere with the donation to the PTO. PTO chooses to accept the donation, that's on them. All we can do is approve or deny a donation from the PTO to us. So, with that said, I've got a couple of questions. This is mostly for the administration. Do we normally accept donations that are specific to a single teacher?
It would be the same as the donation the board approved just a little while ago to baseball and softball. It really is up to the board. The example that I would give would be, let's say during budget deliberations, the board eliminates the golf program, which is an expensive program that serves a small number of students, and maybe only one gender of students. Then a donor comes in and says that they would like to pay for the golf program. The board gets to decide whether or not to accept that donation, because there may have been other reasons. Maybe you also cut every team that only had 10 players on it, and you thought that was fair to do, and you say, I can't do for one what we're not willing to do for the other. So, it would be part of one of the board's two roles, which is setting direction. So, the board does get to make that decision. You did have a good discussion on the baseball softball donation this evening, and you were right on point with that. It is very specific, and you get to make those decisions.
Okay. I need to reference our board policy. Policy 3280 actually says, "If such gifts are approved by the board, the superintendent may be authorized to accept such gifts on behalf of our own school system. All gifts received become the property of the Board of Education to be expended or used at its discretion." So, that's our own policy. So, my understanding of what this gift would end up being, and if I'm wrong, someone please correct me, because we've gotten, you know, mixed up information before on this, the 25, well, the Chromebooks would be donated to Northeast School, but more importantly, donated directly to the control of Ms. Pelletier. Is that, if I read the stipulations correctly, that is, I believe, what they said.
The money is, I'm kind of put in charge of the money. So, the money was donated to the PTO only because there are, what, 503 C3s?
I think, yes, right.
So that she could have a tax write-off when it ends. But I think in the letter that she, she stated in the letter that she wanted me to be in control of the money, to decide where our needs were in fifth grade. So, it was my desire to get Chromebooks and up our technology.
Okay. So, the problem I've got, unfortunately, is that by policy, we can't accept that, because the policy states that they become solely the property of the Board of Education. So, I'm not sure, without making an exception to our own policy, how we accept the gift when it's phrased this specifically. That's one of my concerns. I just want to lay that out there. Still want to get it done, so if we've got a way around it, that's great. I just need to put that out there. I've got questions like, you know, if we're bringing these in, are they coming under our support contract? Are they models that, you know, we buy as the district? Who is responsible for the physical support of those devices, things like that? I just want to make sure we're accounting for that. And God forbid, I don't want this to happen, but what would happen if Ms. Pelletier left the school system for some reason, took another job somewhere? What happens to those devices? The letter specifies that they move in a grade level, if we move her between grade levels, but it doesn't say anything about what happens to the equipment if she chooses, chooses to leave. So, that's, those are really the questions that I've got around the donation still.
Do you have some answers to those questions?
Well, I think that if there was ever redistricting, or if I was, if I were to ever switch grade levels, which hopefully I won't, that they would come with me. But if I were to ever leave Vernon, which if I were, I wouldn't be teaching anymore. I'd work on a cruise ship or something. I've invested many years into Vernon, so they wouldn't come with me. I wouldn't have a need for that many Chromebooks or iPads, a cart. So, they would stay with the town of Vernon.
So, the other question is, would they belong to the school system? And would you...
I think I would have to donate them to you.
And would you do that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's, I think that's what was the question on everyone's mind. Okay, now, Mr. Kemp. No, that's not, that wasn't what you asked.
No, I'm going to come back to that.
Mr. Kemp.
This is very difficult, and I appreciate your good intentions, but really, I don't know how to say this more delicately, you're not really in the driver's seat here. We have to be, and it really comes down to that. You can't be the one choosing what's going to happen with these things. Now, my original question, and I've been away, has the donor been approached by the Vernon Public Schools to determine if there's any chance the donor would remove some or all of their intended or implied restrictions? So, that's a question I have for the superintendent. Have we made any opertures to the donor directly as to what their ultimate intention would be? I think that might have been constructive if we had, because ultimately, these items must become, in my view, the property of the Vernon Board of Education. I wish there was some flexibility there. So, I was trying to think of some kind of solution. Without that, I would suggest that in order...
I think what we're forgetting, David, is that this money was donated to the PTO, which we have no jurisdiction over.
Well, I'm really getting to that. I don't really like that at all. In order to satisfy the intent of the donor, the board and the donor might agree in a memorandum of understanding honoring the donor's intent while untying the hands of the board at the same time. That may not have the force of law, but it certainly would be some degree of mutual respect and understanding as to what the donor's intent is, as well as what the board's requirements are to maintain items in its control. Donations of this size are greatly appreciated. However, the impact of the gift must be available to all. In my view, no PTO has legal standing to take possession of assets to be deployed and maintained by the school system, complete with staff training and network support, that ultimately must become the property of the Board of Education. Likewise, no one person, however well-intended, may do so either. Until it is stipulated that the board will maintain ownership and control of the monetary and physical assets, acceptance of this donation should be regretfully postponed. That's my view.
Mrs. Bush.
Yes, as I said last time, this is an extremely generous donation, and I think that is why this has become so controversial. Just to give you an example, in years past, I have been given donations from Donors Choice or DonorsChoose.com that come directly to me. I request them, they're sent to me, they're mine, and I use them with my students. If I changed grade levels, I went from second grade to first grade, my calculators that I got from that went with me. Yeah, they weren't $25,000 worth of calculators. They were about $250 worth of calculators. The board did not have to accept it. It was given to me. I wrote a letter of thanks through that Donors Choice, which is the vehicle that was used, kind of like the PTO, to accept it and give a, give a donation letter that that person could use for their tax purposes. That's how it works. It just wasn't this big of an amount. Now, if Ms. Pelletier goes and uses them to help our students, it would be very similar to that, but on a much larger scale. My only concern is, who supports the Chromebooks? Who is, you know, who handles something if they need to be worked on or repaired or anything like that? So, that's my only question, but I truly believe that this is a gift to our Teacher of the Year. And another example is Scholastic. I, as a teacher, who gets Scholastic points, I earn things for my classroom. I earn books. I earn school resource things. I even have like a little easel that I got from them, but if I move grade levels, it goes with me. The only issue here is, it's $25,000, and I say kudos to our Teacher of the Year for being able to bring this money into the school and to help our fifth graders. There, it's just the size of the money that is so controversial. And if this is where she wants to put her money instead of California, I say thank you very much. And I think we should, we should allow our Teacher of the Year to take and get us some Chromebooks at Northeast School. I heard her say, we don't even have enough computers in the computer lab to service all the fifth graders. That would open it up to other classrooms to use, and their Chromebook cart to other classrooms to use. And I think that this is not our battle to fight right now, and I think it should go back to rescinding our acceptance, because we have no right to accept it. Or just leave it go and say, this is not our battle. Let's give those Chromebooks to Northeast School.
Mr. Ho.
Thank you. I agree that that is an extremely generous donation coming from your relative. I think it's fantastic that they want to do it. I agree, Mrs. Bush, we don't have any action here tonight, because there is no donation, there is no gift to the Board of Education at this point. It's dollars coming into the PTO. Until the PTO distributes those dollars, we don't have any action to take, because, you know, it's, money is being contributed to a PTO. Once those monies are distributed, and you want to purchase Chromebooks with them or whatever, that's going to have to come before the board, and that's going to have to be approved, that the board accepts that gift from the PTO into our education system, and whatever stipulations may come with that donation from the PTO, it's up to us to decide at that point whether or not we can accept that. But I agree, we need to know who's maintaining these computers on the network. It's not a calculator. These things connect, they have to have security. There's a lot of exposure to the town if they're connecting to our network. Somebody's got to build them, somebody's got to maintain them. There's more than just a calculator here. And whatever happens, you know, I wish the best for the fifth grade. I hope that the donation is decided to be spread across the whole fifth grade at Northeast and not just in one classroom. Because, again, referring to board policy, and Mr. Stansel referred to one of the policies, but there's also another policy under 3280 that refers to, "Anticipated gifts or donations will not supplant Board of Education responsibility for educational funding." Get that. "Nor shall outside funding produce major educational inequities among elementary schools." And one classroom of a fifth grade in the Vernon school system will have a giant inequity compared to all other classrooms if we accept all the Chromebooks into one classroom. That's our policy. But until we're told how the money's going to be spent, where it's going, and how it's going to be distributed, we have no action. Thank you.
Can I talk? Yes. I just want to say, as far as equity, there's not equity in the school system anyway. I mean, we're suffering these hot days without air conditioning. Some schools have it. So, everything's not equitable, but this woman had, she gave a huge donation, but with a stipulation. She wanted it, I mean, I thought people had a right to say where they wanted their donation to go, and to turn something down like that would just be, it would break her heart. She would be so upset. And would we? But also, if you help one school in town, one fifth grade, you're still helping the town. I mean, aren't we for every child? So, even if it's not distributed throughout the fifth grade, you're helping a group of children. And I think it's important that we think about that.
When I say across, I mean, even if it's at the Northeast School, if it's across all fifth grade, I think that's great. But what we heard, what is those going to be, to one classroom?
No, she said both.
She said also.
So, I also heard that if someone were to be reassigned to a different level, those computers would come with her to a different level.
Well, here's the...
No, well, you can't say, we're going to do it one way and then do it another way. If someone were to move, and there's nothing in place, and you haven't spread across both those classrooms, and now she's moved to a fourth grade, does your classroom lose and go to the fourth grade now?
No, no.
This is not what we've been hearing, though. That's what I'm saying. And we heard you say earlier that, well, you know, I did get relocated, they could go with me.
The ones for my class, my particular class, I wouldn't take that, this is for her class.
It does...
She, Erin has no intention of leaving fifth grade, but you just never know from one year to next if you'll be moved. It's just the way it is, and you, she'd hate to have it. If her, if Joan gave it to her for, because she's Teacher of the Year, and the next year she can't use them, then it defeated the whole purpose of her donation.
Mrs. Aaron. I'm not sure that there is an action to take tonight. I just think it's important to have the discussion, so you hear clearly the parameters that the board has to function within. That, as far as I understand, Erin, you can't be in charge of those Chromebooks. And because we have a commitment, it needs to, we can't tell the PTO what to buy, we can't tell them what donations to accept, but we are in complete control of what we accept into the system. So, it needs to be, you heard the discussion about who's going to fix them, who owns them really? You said you may consider giving them to the board as a donation, but there are lots of things to consider. So, to me, the value of this evening's discussion is that you hear that. The thing that I'm most concerned about, it's not a dollar amount, to me, it's about process, and the process failed. And I'd really like to dig to why the process failed, quite honestly. I'm concerned about the emails that were shared with us. Quite honestly, Mrs. Green, I have concerns about your involvement in it. The board doesn't do things in a vacuum, and the $500 donation, I disagreed with for the same reason that I would disagree with the $25,000 donation. We have to be very careful about what we take in and what we're responsible for, and I think that your abdication, your, you alluded to, you're abdicating, your responsibility, because it had nothing to do with you is, not only do I, I just think it's incorrect. You're the principal of the building, and you should be involved in what's going on there. I'm much more concerned about the process, that we have a process, and it seems to me it wasn't followed. And that's why, that's why we're having this ugly discussion about something that should be very nice and advantageous to our system. Somebody didn't do what they were supposed to do.
Out to the board, can I answer?
Yes, fine. There's a lot of different things that go on to having things come into the school. My involvement in this is to determine who has 501C3, and I gave that information to Erin to provide to the donor. That's what you wanted, a 501C3. Okay? And the PTO has that. So, I know that, I talked to Mr. Picaro about that. The school system does not have a 501C3, so she could use that as a tax relief. I provided that information. There's a couple of other things. You do have a technology policy where it says you can bring your own technology to school. So, if Erin owns the computers, she can bring them to the school according to the Vernon policy. So, that's one thing. We have the Donors Choose, which we have people in the district have several Chromebooks that have been given to them through Donors Choose, which they own. It's kind of conflicting, so it's a little, it's, you know, so, you know, those things need to be dealt with as well. So, if, for instance, if Erin set up a Donors Choose, which she can do, for 50 Chromebooks, and it's for $25,000, that can be funded through the Donors Choose, and it can come into the school system, because right now in Vernon Public Schools, there are a lot of Chromebooks, there are a lot of things that came from Donors Choose that belonged to teachers. So, it's, we're getting like mixed information here. That's my concern. My only involvement in this was to guide her when she asked me questions, to tell her who has a 5013C, and to talk to Mr. Picaro about it. That's it. I really don't have involvement until the money comes and I have to decide, or I have to talk with the PTO to see how they want to use these funds. But the funds belong to Erin. It was donated to Erin, it wasn't donated to the board, and they needed that. So, that's it. That's my involvement in that.
So, if Erin, I'm sorry. So, if Erin or these other teachers who bring their own technology to school...
they're also responsible for their upkeep and re-pay and everything else.
Right, exactly, yes. And it doesn't have Board stickers on it, nothing?
Right. So that's my only concern, Brian, is that this discussion is valid because those things exist. It'd be nice to simply say, sure, that's wonderful and bring it on. The truth is, there's more to it than that. And until the Board is asked to accept a donation or to be involved, we're not. But it's important to have the discussion.
So when it involves technology, it kind of falls under the bring our technology. That, you know, because that's what the Donors Choose falls under. That's, and it doesn't belong to the Board. The Board is not responsible. We do not put tickets in or IT for any type of things we get from Donors Choose, any technology, because it just doesn't belong to the Board. You're not responsible for that.
Long as everybody's clear.
Yeah.
Mr. Stans.
So I completely agree with that. I understand what you're saying. What you will be doing though by bringing these in is setting academic policy for the fifth grade at Northeast. So that's where it's kind of different than a teacher receives a Chromebook individually or classroom. You're now changing the fifth grade teaching and instruction at Northeast based upon these personally owned items, which...
Yeah, that's, exactly. I mean, but, that's, I mean, that's a positive. But yeah, the bring our own technology, unfortunately, it doesn't stipulate you know how much you can bring. So that's kind of where it's like, and it's not like we want to do that and we don't want to be, you know, inequitable among, we're not trying to cause problems. I really was a little overwhelmed by this and I really didn't think we'd ever get the money. But, you know, it is a nice thing and it's not like we're trying to, we're just trying to figure it out because there's a lot of, and we seek your guidance.
I understand. The other comment I have to make on the email is, I felt like you were committing the Board to accepting the donation with certain stipulations because you signed off on it. And I don't think that was appropriate.
Well, it hasn't been, no, it's just a piece of paper that we have, it hasn't been sent anywhere.
Mrs. Bush?
One of the problems I'm seeing here is that Ms. Aaron alluded to a procedure. They're really, this is very unprecedented. So there is absolutely no one specific procedure to go by because this is not something we experience probably in a 10-year period. So that's why I think Mrs. Green is taking and trying to figure out the correct way to do it. And I think she's done a halfway decent job considering that we haven't trailblazed this way before. So I think that this might open our eyes to future things because I know the private sector is trying to help our schools. And we have to just be aware that there's people out there that want to help through processes like Donors Choose, through other areas to bring it into the school systems. And sometimes it's given to a specific teacher. And I think it's wonderful. And I think that we should end this and say, thank you very much.
Mr. Kim?
Unfortunately, I don't think this is so wonderful. This is a matter of governance and it's as simple as that. And for a principal to tell us the Board is not responsible, I think is just, I, I... The Board is ultimately responsible for everything that goes on in the school system. And when there are donations or there are gifts or whatever, they have to be done in accordance with the Board, with what the Board's responsibilities are. And in my view, that's paramount.
Can I just follow that? I didn't say you weren't responsible. I thought that if something broke or something like that for the computer, that that, when somebody asked that question about the technology and the technology failed or there was a problem, the Board wouldn't be responsible to repair in that, I meant the IT, like central office. I just want to clarify that, I didn't say you're not responsible.
In my view, we're in violation of the school's policy. We are going to produce a major educational inequity here. No matter how it ends up in the classroom, it's inequitable and it's in violation of Board policy. All good feelings aside, that's what it is.
Is it possible for you to tell me what the motion was that the Board approved, the exact language?
Is there a motion?
The last meeting.
It was in the minutes.
Oh.
Yeah, it was in the minutes. It was, except for the money's into the activity.
That was the motion?
Yes.
And that didn't, so that didn't happen. We made a motion because Mr. Picaro helped us understand that that either wouldn't go to the Board, it would go to the activity account. And that didn't happen. And that's what we, that's what our motion said then, to the activity account. So we do need to, we do need to rescind that motion since that isn't what's happening. So we do need to take some action because that was what our motion said.
What if, what if the PTO wrote a check to the activity account? Would that make it easier? I'm just wondering, what can we do to make this easier? This is all in good faith, it's for our kids. We need this. We just had a discussion on how we can't afford a lacrosse team because we're so short on money and here's $25,000. Let me know what to do. This is new to me. I've never, I can't imagine having this much money. Tell me what to do, what can make this easier? We're all, we all have the kids in our mind. We all want what's best for them and we're all trying. And I hate that we're bickering over such a generous gift when so many other schools could have been given this gift. So what can we do? And also, back to the equity issue. I was told last week from a teacher at Center Road School that every year they get $5,000 from the church across the street. So after five years, they have their own $25,000. There's so much inequity in the town. There's so much inequity from Donors Choose. I have so many colleagues that have a classroom full of Chromebooks or iPads from Donors Choose. So where do you draw the line? I mean, how is that any different than Donors Choose and from Scholastic and from a donation from a church? I mean, we could go on and on about inequity. We're giving this money to serve our students. I thought, when Joan first told me, I thought, yeah, right, I'm not gonna get a check. I thought that would be our biggest obstacle. And then we got that check and it's sitting there. And that's not our obstacle. It's a shame that politics have to get in the way. And I understand we have to make sure we have all the answers. Who's gonna take care of the Chromebooks? Who's going to fix them? But again, how is it different than Donors Choose? Where a classroom full of Chromebooks from Donors Choose, the teacher is responsible for their upkeep? And I guess I'm just confused because again, this is very new to me and I didn't see this coming at all.
Mr. Stans?
Thank you. Actually, I want to say, I've never heard of Donors Choose before, so it's been an enlightening experience tonight to find out that exists. For me, it's not the inequity issue at all. I completely agree the schools already have multiple differences, both financial and physical, between the different environments. So I'm really not worried about that. I just, I want to make sure that we accept it in a way that's consistent with the policy and that we get it into the classrooms because I really want your kids to have. That's it. So you asked how we could do this. The answer, the quick and short answer is that either the Chromebooks or the $25,000 is donated to Northeast School, but the stipulations that they're under can't really be part of the donation based on our own policy unless we choose to make an exception to that policy. That's the, that's the quick and short way to do it. The other way, if you took Donors Choice and brought them in the school, I'm okay with that too. I just want to get it in in a way that's legal, supported by policy, and that we can move forward with it.
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Aaron?
I'm just reflecting the same minutes. Mr. Picaro explained that the funds will be placed in the school's activity account and can't be reallocated to other schools in the district. Didn't happen. So, and we weren't, we didn't have all of the information that we have now. My guess would be that the discussion and the result of that agenda item would have been different and we would have requested more information. And it's not politics, it's policy.
Well, the bottom line is that the motion that we made at the last meeting is not accurate. So does that make it a moot? I don't know, what does that make it? I'm thinking we could rescind it and then just, the PTO has a donation and when they choose to purchase something with that $25,000, if they want to donate it to the school system, then they come back to us.
That's one way I guess we could do it. The other way is we simply ignore the motion because the donation was never made to the school of $25,000. So yes, we moved to accept it, but it was never actually made, so, oh well.
So that's what I'm saying, okay. So I don't believe we need to take any action tonight, correct? Anybody in agreement with that? And should the PTO and Erin decide to purchase Chromebooks and donate them to the school system, then you would have to come before us for acceptance of that donation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Everybody on board with that? Everybody on board with that?
I'm just trying to make sense. So if we were to buy iPads, anything, would that money, it needs to be approved? Is that how it works?
If it, if it's being donated to the school, yes.
Donate to the school?
If it's not being donated to the school, then it's, I guess it's like your Donors Choice that you're talking about. But understand that our IT department does not maintain them or do any work on them, correct?
Okay. So let me just clarify, I want to make sure I have it all straight. So if it wasn't donated to donor, if it wasn't donated through the school, to the school, it would be as if it's Donors Choose. So just like Donors Choose, the Chromebooks would be purchased and they would be my property to have fixed and kept up and to make sure security is put on them and everything else.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I think they're all good. I'm sorry we put you through this, but it was educational for all of us. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to item 6.3. Mr. Pusso, can you run all of that? Thank you. This is the Voluntary Corrective Action Plan that Mr. Picaro referred to in the Finance Committee meeting. You've had the updates, so I know Mr. Pusso's not gonna go through them specifically, but I think he can certainly speak in general to the, to the report if you would like to or if the Board members have questions. No actions, certainly.
Hello, Madam Chair, Board. Thank you for having me here tonight. I can do a quick preview of where we're at, where we were. A few years ago, there was a review done at Rockville High School by the Office of Civil Rights. And they came up with 14 pages of action points that needed to be addressed. And they don't expect everything to be done in one year or two years. They just, they want to see progress going on every year. So during last year's budget season, we did a request in the capital portion of doing it for, requesting $20,000 a year for three years and to address certain items. This, this year, the items that we're addressing are eyewash, eyewash stations, interior signs, classroom signs, some lock hardware sets, lock sets, and, you know, we're looking at it. Some operations to the girls locker room. We're on schedule, we're on schedule to have these items completed this year. You know, we send a report every year of what we expect to get done. And those items, we do expect to get done for the following year and we'll do another report. It's around June, I believe, is when the reports do. And if there's any questions, I...
Are there any questions to go? The bottom line is this is voluntary, so it doesn't have to be done in any specific amount of time, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mrs. Aaron?
Hi.
These, the list is so familiar. Is it the same, the same things that just keep coming back to us again in different forms?
No, it's the same exact list.
It's the same thing that we just see over and over?
Yep. So next year, there'll be a good 20 items that'll be out of this, but it'll say complete next to one. Now we have dates of when we expect completions.
And I really just wonder what accessible teacher and student desks are. What's an accessible desk?
It's a desk that's constructed so a person in a wheelchair can roll in it.
Okay. So someday we won't be looking at the same list over and over and over?
I hope so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Pusso?
What do we do now with accessible desks?
Through the chair, we don't have, we don't have any teachers that require those desks at this point. And on student desks, we have, where a student would need them, we have desks in those classrooms for them, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else that have any questions? Thank you very much. Might as well stay there, I think, if you're up next to... Board of Education, Ad Hoc Athletic Committee and Facilities Committee report? Well, we've got Bill there, reminds you to do the facilities.
Yes, thank you. Anything to facilities?
Sure, sure. You know, I don't have minutes from the, from the meeting.
Basically, we went over Thursday night, I believe it was?
Yes.
We went over, basically, the punch list that Mr. Pusso's been working on with several months, basically at the high school. Quick overview was install a carburetor outside the school-based health area. Convert the CCTV system, which is in progress. Another item over at the high school was convert the THW system.
Yeah, domestic hot water.
Oil and gas has completed. The big thing in regards to ad hoc and in facilities was we got a presentation from Malone and McRum concerning the feasibility studies on the upper field, which is the south side campus of the athletic fields. Unfortunately, we do not have enough copies for all the board members, I'll wind up and bring that up next week. We'll get it.
Do you have the other copy?
There wasn't enough for every member, so I didn't, I didn't bring them.
So it's possible we go with that next meeting and get copies made. Going over to, is there anything on the middle school still?
The middle school.
Repave in the parking lot has completed. That's all lined up, lacrosse blocks are all lined up. Innovate the FCS cooking room through the Sykes Grant. all lined up. Innovate the FCS cooking room through the Sykes grant. That's a, is that completed or is that still in progress?
We're going for our inspection from the building official on Thursday. So hopefully beginning of next week, that will be in operation and used. I have the list of the summer, of all the summer projects that we have completed. You know, there's, there's a lot of items here. You know, some of the bigger things. We're going to be installing a security gate between the kitchen and the cafeteria over at BCMS. Center Road School, we're gonna, we'll, this month, we'll be having a divider curtain installed in the gymnasium. They have the old Holden-type door that was unsafe, so that was taken down last spring. We'll have the new divider curtain. It's being made as we talk and should be aired by October installed. We're going to be installing, the contractor's been awarded a project to install air conditioning in the media center at Center Road School, which is, you know, a good thing. Really needed. You know, Skinner Road School, we're in process of replacing their water heater. We removed the 10,000 gallon oil tank, in-ground oil tank over at Skinner Road School this year. We also removed the one at Maple Street School this year. So those were two big, two big projects that now we don't have the environmental DEP EPA paperwork to do every year. And they, they needed, by law, they would have had to come out by 2018. So we're ahead of the schedule there, so that was good. Maple Street, we did some reinforcement with bathrooms. We put in some solid tendon panels. Maple Street School has ceilings this high, and there's a lot of echo in, so we put in some panels in some of their classrooms to hopefully eliminate that echo in. I think they'll be successful on that. And we're replacing a old, the second old boiler in this building this year. We replaced one two years ago. This year, we'll be replacing the second one. The contractor has been awarded that project. We're running, everything is capable of running on gas now. So that's, that gives us a lot of opportunity to save money, clean, burn, you know, higher efficiencies, cleaner burn-in, less maintenance costs. So a lot of, a lot of good stuff going on in the district.
Mr. Stansfield?
Thank you. To you, Madam Chair, if you don't mind. I have a question specifically about the track. I happened to be up there slowly jogging around it the other day. And there's a, in several places, there's black, like, almost like a spongy surface over what looks to be numerous cracks and chips. And I'm wondering, is that going to be repaired in time for track season? Because I can't imagine, I mean, there was a pretty good lip on that thing and-
Yeah. We do repairs on that track. Not every year, but it's, we've been chasing the cracks on that, that track, and it will be, you know, item will be addressed again.
Okay. So that, the black stuff won't be there when they're actually out there running, right? Because that, something could trip on that lip. It's-
I think Dr. Post might be able to add something to that.
Yeah, those, those black pads are for the cleats on the football players and it's on the way where they're crossing the track. We put them down there so they don't damage the track. So they will not be there when the kids are running on the track.
Excellent.
We have a cross-country meet tomorrow, and they'll be gone for that meet. So that's different. You do see, you've probably seen where we have repaired some cracks. So there's like patches on the track, and we have done that recently to help with some of the cracks.
Okay. I didn't realize you were talking about the track protector.
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification. It looked like it was covering cracks, so I wasn't sure.
Mrs. Russell?
The Fire Marshal's report.
Fire Marshal's report, yes.
You have every school except Maple Street.
Maple Street School didn't have any violations.
Oh. Thank you.
That's nice.
Sorry. May I address Mr. Mrs. Lincoln? Mr. Lincoln?
It's your new name.
May I?
Yes.
The Ad Hoc Committee, I think is a great thing. It brought together people with different interests, different concerns, different expertise, you know, good thing to have happen. The sad news to me was that there was so much wrong with our athletic fields and, okay. So I'm wondering if your committee has spent any time talking about not just fixing, but how that's not going to happen again. How things aren't going to get out of, you know, get off our radar again. Because it, it's a shame when the community has to tell us what's wrong and we don't know. So is that part of your discussion at all?
Well, coincidentally, I wanted to end Ad Hoc in the last school year, so end of June. Been trying to get one last piece of information. That was all the outside list that we got. We have, we got an inside list, February, March, of what was in, what was in progress, what was completed, what was going to be done, whether this fiscal year or next fiscal year. So it was a work in progress, either from Mr. Pluso or Mr. Conahan. So it was showing progress, good progress. Since June, and Dr. Conahan could add to this, I've been trying to get an outside list. Again, work in progress, completed, not going to get done until this fiscal year, next fiscal year, you know, whatever, you know, again, work in progress. I mean, there's decades of work to be done, but we've not been able to get that list from Parks and Rec or the town for that matter. So-
So chances are, we will be blindsided again by the list of needs?
No, I wouldn't say that. Between Dr. Chad and myself, we're going to keep, you know, the irons in the fire. We're going to keep working on this. What I'd like to do is dissolve Ad Hoc. You know, we proved we need full-time AD. But what I'd like to do is take the facility issues for athletics and move them over to the Facility Committee. So when we have our, you know, meeting, you know, monthly or every couple of months, still look at that list of whether indoor or outdoor athletic issues, certain facilities, and keep working on that list, keep getting those things done. You know, when it comes to budget time, we're going to need some dollars for this or some dollars for that. Whether it's small projects or the million-dollar projects, you know, set our sights and start working on that. So.
Well, you, the work that you've been doing, you and your committee have been doing, is so valuable that my, where I was going was, maybe the board should consider establishing a, a committee that stays, either it becomes part of the Facility Committee's responsibilities or it is an athletic committee. And because it can't go away when you go away, Steve. It can't go away when some of these projects are, are completed. That was part of why I asked, how, whose radar is this going to stay on once you get to a better place? So maybe, maybe the answer is for the board to consider establishing a committee that either remains working or the Facilities Committee assumes the responsibility for athletic fields as well.
I believe that was the intention, that I was going to dissolve the Ad Hoc Committee tonight and move all of the things that we were covering on the Ad Hoc Committee to-
Well, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were going to do that. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just did it.
So that's what I'd like. I don't know if we need to do a motion or just that we didn't know. So.
It's Steve. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to add from the SARM that historically, the Facilities Committee has had responsibility for the maintenance and upkeep of that because it falls under our, our five-year capital improvement plan in general. So I think it's fine coming back. I agree, the focus is specific to just the athletic requirements has been great because we exposed a lot of things that we just didn't know about. So.
And hopefully, the Facilities Committee will continue to go into depth as we did on the, on the Ad Hoc Committee.
I think the original purpose of this was to really get a handle on what was going on with the athletic fields and things like that. And I think that that was done. And I think that I commend the work of the Ad Hoc Committee for the work they did, not only to improve what we have or just to have a vision of where we'd like to go with our facilities in the future. And I think that the awareness that was made by this committee will continue on with the facilities because we'll always have one eye looking at it. And I think that the, it'll be a positive thing to move it in there and to thank those who served on it because I think they did a really great job.
Thank you. I'll pass that on.
Yeah, with that said, I was going to publicly acknowledge all the people on the committee. Obviously, Dr. Plusel, Mr. Rocket, Mr. Harrison, Scott Smith, and Charlie Chatterton.
Yes.
And David and Steve. So thank everybody for their time.
Just one more question. Did the, your Ad Hoc Committee consider the discussion about a gate at the, on the dirt road that goes up to the community gardens? There used to be a gate there. And it, the concern is clearing cars before cross-country because that's where the kids, the kids run. And we did, we did bring up that as a concern and I never saw it mentioned anywhere. Did it just, did it ever get to your committee or?
No, I don't think we knew that was-
We talked about that in June when we were trying to be CMS. One of the problems, one of the things that Mr. Harrison was noticing, that people were driving over the curb, you know where the snack shack is?
Yes.
And in the softball field. They were driving around that area and driving across the field to go up to the frisbee area, frisbee ball. So.
But the, but the dirt road is open and that's what goes to-
Correct.
-the community gardens and to the frisbee field and all. And without a gate there, traffic comes and goes and you need people, when you're running across country meet, the kids run on that road.
Correct.
So the gate never became a topic of discussion. Replacing the gate. There used to be one. Putting one up again was not part of the discussion.
Bring that up again.
Yeah. I did not know there was a gate there.
Used, used to be.
Then it didn't.
You know, fell apart. It was taken down and never replaced. And it's, it's a little, it is concerning. They post like parents of runners, if there's a teacher or-
Dr. Chad's situation, I think.
Yeah. It's an accident waiting to happen, like, without being inflammatory. I think it's an accident.
Now we have added traffic with frisbee ball.
Exactly.
Or with disc golf, excuse me.
So if you could put that back on your radar, I think it might be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions on the Athletic Committee or Facilities Committee? Okay. Now we'll move on to item 6.4A, which is general improvements to Alliance District School Buildings Grant Program application.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. We received quite a treat in the mail the other day with this grant application that you have before you. This is for information only at this point, but we wanted to point out that it's one and a quarter million dollars that we are eligible for. It is only for Alliance Districts. There are a list of the types of activities that we can do. Certainly, the application is due in, I think, another month or so. And I know that Mr. Picaro and Mr. Pluso and Mr. Conahan have been meeting to generate ideas. The board, of course, being an application for grant, would get to approve those ideas. I've turned it over to Mr. Picaro, Mr. Pluso, to share more information.
Thank you, to you, Madam Chair. The only thing I would add is the first headline is October 30th. Our goal is to work through the Facilities Committee and the board with our recommended list of items for the October 30th. Note, when we were looking at the grant and doing additional research into it, there's opportunities for us to make application in all or one or two of the grant mission dates. So it doesn't have to be an all 1.125 million dollars for October 30th. There may be some additional discussions regarding some of the proposed projects that would take a little bit of time and more data to present. So we will be back in touch, as Dr. Conahan had mentioned, through the Facilities Committee and the board with our recommendations for this grant.
Could I suggest, Mr. Picaro, that you tell the board a little bit about, we had a brief discussion in the Finance Committee about those eligible improvement projects and the grant money that might be available?
Sure, through the chair. We discussed in the Finance Committee meeting this evening that this grant is specifically designed for us to address projects that we would normally not apply for reimbursement through the State Department of Ed, now through the Department of Administrative Services School Buildings Division. So that really opens up a wonderful opportunity for us to address some, some real needs that we've been looking at, both in our capital expenditure plan, which we've already started looking at prioritizing, and in other items as well. So it could include some of the Athletic Committee recommendations that have been made through the Ad Hoc Committee. I would certainly anticipate that on our list, there will be items in there and funding to support them. And really, it's, it's very broad. You'll see in the guidance, eligible improvements, put everything from replacing windows and doors to paving. We discussed in our Finance Committee meeting this evening, an opportunity to enhance our voice-over internet phone system project that's currently on the table with the town to make us 100% VoIP instead of partial. So there's really a lot of opportunity for us to knock down some items and enhance our school schools.
Any other questions on that?
Just wanted to point out, in the fine print here, there are things that are not permissible. And one of them happens to be, I'll just read it briefly. Artificial turf is an example of an item that is not an allowable expense. Athletic fields and so on, repairs of roofs are. And I did express to the committee, the appearance of Center Road School, I think, is something that needs to be considered in when we have this opportunity. I'm specifically referring to the facade around the building, in particular, that which the public sees where, I'm not really sure what the cause is, but it's kind of a mole effect, if you will. It seems to be seeping through the concrete. And it just, its appearance, in my opinion, is, is lacking. And I'm not sure of the remediation.
Through the chair, I may. Thank you for that, Mr. Kemp. That's actually one of the items that we had vetted around on our list that we're going to be bringing back to the Facilities Committee to do the repoint masonry work on that side of the building for Center Road School to address some of the FRS and these issues that are happening.
Repointing, but is FRS?
FRS, excuse me.
That's what's the white move stuff going on over there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Pluso.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay. Now we move on to Board of Education Finance.
Thank you, to you, Madam Chair, and to the board. As per usual, I will hit some of the highlights and respond in more detail to the specific questions that we had. Full agenda. This is our first Finance Committee meeting in quite some time, so we did go through several items. Let me start by discussing the summary of account balances, which is Exhibit A in your Business of Finance report. Again, very high level. If you could go down to some of your questions for those that weren't at the Finance Committee meeting. At this point in time, our original appropriation of $51.6 million, we've expended 4.78 million. We've incurred 28 million of that, and most of that's in salaries, as you would expect, leaving an available budget of $18,801,665.09. Translates to a percent use at this point in time of 6.357. I touched briefly, I'll touch briefly upon, as a way of an update for the whole board, some of the grants. You'll notice there's some numbers there, percent use that are very high. 318% for Title I, 5,049% for Title II. And the reason being, just as a reminder for those board members that are looking at, looking at that and wondering, how is that possible? As I mentioned in Finance, this is a snapshot, real-time monies that are received. We're fully expecting Title I grant funds in addition to what you're seeing as far as the, any carryover monies, like the $54,506, that's carryover from prior year. In addition to that, we're expecting another $469,000 for Title I, $140,000 for Title II, $13,000 for Title III, and $807,000 for IDEA. So that will bring parity to percent use there. In addition to that, we had a brief discussion about our Medicaid reimbursement process. We're pleased to report that we have brought in better-than-expected reimbursements from our Medicaid program. And as the board knows, we had set up, if you will, a rainy day fund to address any extraordinary expenses related to our special education program services in the future through a resolution that was passed, approved by the board, passed by the council for us to access those funds. We're projecting that in the next three years, based upon our current trend of reimbursement, we'll have close to a million or a little over a million dollars in that account. So we had a brief discussion. And I will be exploring, at the direction of the Finance Committee, options for us to look at new language, potentially for that resolution, where maybe we can put a cap on it. This is a conversation that I started having with Mr. Louie King. And then any additional funds over that cap could be considered for capital non-recurring educational fund, funding. So lots of opportunities for us to do some good with those funds and work with the town collaboratively. And those conversations have started, and additional details will be forthcoming at our future, excuse me, Finance Committee meeting. We discussed some of the budget transfers. There are no budget amendments for the board to take action on this evening. Be glad to entertain any questions regarding the budget transfers as presented by any board member that was not in the Finance Committee. I had mentioned that our EDO1 report has been filed per schedule and that our minimum budget requirement report to the State Department of Ed has been filed. And note, the importance in that is that we've obviously met the minimum budget requirement by virtue of the fact that we have 0.62% increase over above where we were last year. And that has been, has been had. I discussed a lot of the activities relating to our general business over the summer. There were several contracts negotiated and executed, following YMCA, Sykes Grant for the CNC Mill Project, a competitive bidding and award, a negotiated contract for Rockville High School Online Learning. We're in the final stages of renegotiating our 10-year lease with the West, for the Westman Learning Center that supports our Next Step program, as well as adult ed. And we're pleased to report that the new lease addresses some of the concerns related to liability and direction of repairs that will be done. So we'll be getting a new roof in that building as the current new lease stands. And we will also be paying less than we did for the previous 10-year lease, which is something we usually don't see. So it's been a lot of work, and we're in the home stretch for that as well. We touched upon some of the new Affordable Care Act reporting requirements from the IRS, expansion of our volume purchasing program through our centralized purchasing business office that includes additional consortiums who receive discounts on supplies, materials, and equipment. We had briefly talked about some ideas for new student activity accounting for this fiscal year and beyond. We had discussed already in, under the board's agendas and the general improvements to Alliance District School Grants, grant program ideas, and voluntary corrective action plan. And I think that's about it as far as the major highlights go. But I'd be glad to entertain any specific questions about any of the others.
Mr. Kemp?
Sorry. Mike, the $380,000 in IDEA, IDEA, you said that you're expecting, you're expecting that to balance out- bounce out, but you didn't clarify when we might see that negative number disappear.
Through the chair, we don't have the exact date that the installment's going to be received, but we are expecting through the award, the combination of receiving the State Department of Ed, $807,000 to be coming in. So I don't have an exact date from the State Department of Ed, so I will need to draw down on those funds, but I can get back to that. As soon as they open up the drawdown portion of the grant portal, we will take advantage of it as well, as soon as our report is ready for you.
All right, but you can understand that our concern is special in funding, through some of our history. We want to pay particular attention to how we're doing there.
Very much so. I keep a close eye on that, the encumbrances related to staff that are in the program, and fully expect us to receive that funding from the state.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. The next two items are executive session, so I was wondering if we could move to Item 7.0 to review and update the board's education calendar. Does anybody have anything for the calendar? I have a question. In September, Rockville High has September 25th as the half-day PD day, but all the other schools have the 18th. It's the 18th, that's why I'm asking. And also, in October, the Center Road School PTO is on the 8th. That's the third map, that's not. Does anybody else have anything for the calendar? Okay, Item 8.0, opportunity for questions from the press on agenda items. Are there any questions? Okay. Now, Mr. Pul.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss, the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the business.
Can you serve the second amendment? Is there a motion, or those in favor? Do you have a second? I do anticipate the board may take action at the end of that, to give a red pen item.
I'll just turn the page.
I'll just turn the screen off.
You know, we want to answer your questions.
I'm sorry. Mike, the 380,000 in IDEA, you said that you're expecting, you're expecting that to bounce out, but you didn't clarify when we might see that negative number disappear.
Through the chair, we don't have the exact date that the installment's going to be received. What we are expecting through the award, information received from the State Department of Ed, $807,000 to be coming in. So I don't have an exact date from the State Department of Ed, so we'll draw down on those funds, but I can get back to you with that. As soon as they open up the drawdown portion of the grant portal, we will take advantage of it as well, as soon as our report's ready for you.
All right, but you can understand that our concern is special in funding, given some of our history. We want to pay particular attention to how we're doing.
Very much so. I keep a low eye on that. The encumbrances are related to staff that are in the program, and fully expect us to receive that funding from the state. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. The next two items are executive session, so I was wondering if we could move to item 7.0 to review and update the board's education calendar. Does anybody have anything for the calendar?
I have a question. In September, Rockville High has September 25th as the half-day PD day, but all the other schools have the 18th. It's the 18th, and so it's not like Rockville High know. And also, in October, the Sennado School PTO is on the 8th. Does anybody else have anything for the calendar? Okay, item 8.0, opportunity for questions from the press on agenda items. Are there any questions? No? Okay. Now, Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Can you serve the second on that motion? Is that a wish of those in favor? Mr. Evans. I do anticipate the Board may take action at the end of that particular agenda item.
I'll just turn the screen off.
Wash your ears and adjourn the system, adjourn the speakers. Why?
Okay. Back to regular sessions. Mr. Holt.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education support the actions discussed in executive session.
Second? Okay. Mr. Holt.
Motion that the Board returns to executive session to discuss the circumstantial evaluation.
Second? Second. Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion that the Board returns to executive session to discuss the circumstantial evaluation.
Second? Second. Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion that the Board returns to executive session to discuss the circumstantial evaluation.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion that the Board returns to executive session to discuss the circumstantial evaluation.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans. All those in favor? Mr. Evans. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss the discussion regarding pending claim and litigations, and inviting Superintendent and the Director of the District.
Mr. Evans.